Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for October 16th. The Board held a hearing on the water sewer rates. The discussion revolved around proposed changes to water rates, with residents voicing concerns about commercial classification and the need for water conservation.
The town commissioned a consultant underwater engineers to do a water sewer rate study, which they did do, and we've made that accessible to the public. And the rate recommendations were made at the hearing on September 11th. There was a recommendation made to increase the water rates by 19.87% and sewer rates by 4%.
And I don't know the legality of this, whether there could be a commercial and a residential fee. Tears for the commercial and tears for the, you know, I don't want to pay, I don't think we should have to pay as much as Lindt Chocolate pays for our water, and they're in stratum. The recommendation of the Waters and Sewer Advisory Committee was to, instead of doing a roughly a 20% increase on water, was to scale that back a little bit to 15.
The consensus I'm getting from the Board is that the 15% is what we want to recommend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Next, the request for a 15-minute parking limit was brought to the Board's attention. The first of three public hearings on the matter was opened, and discussion ensued regarding potential amendments to parking ordinances.
Being proposed is a revision of the town ordinance that allows 15-minute parking spaces, of which there are only four in town.
Near the post office.
Near the post office.
And this is proposing an additional one on Front Street?
Correct.
In front of 152 Front Street?
Correct.
Okay.
Later on in the meeting, a discussion was had about committees and the potential need to combine or sunset certain committees.
Certainly, we've had a problem with the number of members for certain committees meeting quorums. I know the Board has already addressed that with the Communications Advisory Committee, where we voted to reduce the number of voting members so that they can take care of their quorum problem.
The Chairman and I have talked about the trouble that the Heritage Commission is having and the HDC is having, keeping and/or getting new members. So I really think that we need to give those Boards an opportunity to say yes or no, because those are both.
Okay, good evening. As the hour is 6:00 PM, I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, October 30th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Our first order of business this evening is to hopefully go into public session until 7 o'clock. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A, colon 32A and L.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
That's Selectman Chartran.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
And the Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The Board will be in non-public.
Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for October 16th. The Board held a hearing on the water sewer rates. The discussion revolved around proposed changes to water rates, with residents voicing concerns about commercial classification and the need for water conservation.
The town commissioned a consultant underwater engineers to do a water sewer rate study, which they did do, and we've made that accessible to the public. And the rate recommendations were made at the hearing on September 11th. There was a recommendation made to increase the water rates by 19.87% and sewer rates by 4%.
And I don't know the legality of this, whether there could be a commercial and a residential fee. Tears for the commercial and tears for the, you know, I don't want to pay, I don't think we should have to pay as much as Lindt Chocolate pays for our water, and they're in stratum. The recommendation of the Waters and Sewer Advisory Committee was to, instead of doing a roughly a 20% increase on water, was to scale that back a little bit to 15.
The consensus I'm getting from the Board is that the 15% is what we want to recommend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Next, the request for a 15-minute parking limit was brought to the Board's attention. The first of three public hearings on the matter was opened, and discussion ensued regarding potential amendments to parking ordinances.
Being proposed is a revision of the town ordinance that allows 15-minute parking spaces, of which there are only four in town.
Near the post office.
Near the post office.
And this is proposing an additional one on Front Street?
Correct.
In front of 152 Front Street?
Correct.
Okay.
Later on in the meeting, a discussion was had about committees and the potential need to combine or sunset certain committees.
Certainly, we've had a problem with the number of members for certain committees meeting quorums. I know the Board has already addressed that with the Communications Advisory Committee, where we voted to reduce the number of voting members so that they can take care of their quorum problem.
The Chairman and I have talked about the trouble that the Heritage Commission is having and the HDC is having, keeping and/or getting new members. So I really think that we need to give those Boards an opportunity to say yes or no, because those are both, would have to go on the ballot.
The meeting then moved on to regular business. To hear the entire meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next Select Board meeting is slated for October 30th. See you there. The River Advisory Committee received a presentation from Interim Public Works Director Paul Velosic regarding a grant opportunity for the town. Mr. Velosic and the project consultant then presented preliminary data from their ongoing study of the dam to talk about potential ways to address mandates from the state for safety.
Here's just a site locus, you know, pickpocket dams here in the center. It's a few miles upstream from the Great Dam. It's right on the town line with Brentwood. Given that the dam was reclassified as a high-hazard dam, means it needs to pass two-and-a-half times the 100-year flow. The regulatory standard is to pass that storm with one foot of freeboard across your spillway. The dam currently doesn't even pass the 50-year storm without overtopping the abutments.
Options for addressing the dam's deficiencies included increasing the height of the abutments, adding a second abutment, and full dam removal. The consultant also presented cost estimates for the various options, ranging from $1.5 to $2.1 million, with full dam removal being the cheapest option at just over $1 million. The grant program by the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration Fisheries Division aims to fund projects that restore fish passage through barrier removal. This grant is specifically aimed at supporting native migratory and sea-run fish in coastal ecosystems, such as that of the river herring found in the Exeter Swampscott and Seacoast, New Hampshire area. If awarded the grant, it would allow the town to cover up to 100% of the cost of removal. As the deadline for applications is quickly approaching, Mr. Velosic was looking for feedback from the committee on how they think the town should proceed.
If we were to improve the dam to meet the highest requirement, would we change the impoundment level at all, or would it stay where it is? And so all you're doing is just increasing the plowwind floods.
The alternatives we've looked at and talked about today would keep the impoundment as is today.
I can tell you right now that we've had the largest, in the Biscatica Region watershed that, in the Great Bay watershed that we're in, we've had the largest migratory fish return since 1992, I think it was. And like, the great, huge majority of that was the Exeter River, and the counting of that really flipped over when that dam came out.
Much better.
It was absolutely tremendous, and pickpocket is the next one.
After much discussion back and forth, the committee agreed that it made good financial sense to move forward with pursuing the grant, leaving the decision on whether or not to remove the dam to the Select Board or the voters themselves. At the October 2nd meeting of the Select Board, Mr. Velosic and the consultant did the same presentation for the Select Board, which also had questions about how the process would play out.
It would cover the entire amount of the dam removal?
The grant would cover the full cost of the dam.
With no match.
With no match.
What is the process for approving that? Would there need to be a town vote?
We have to do something anyway, because the dam is failing.
Something's gonna have to be done.
Right. And so this is the cheapest, the thing that has been recommended by our town committee.
We want to pursue the grant. I'm just not sure what happens when you get it.
Ultimately, the Select Board decided to vote in favor of pursuing the grant and issuing a letter of support for dam removal as the preferred option. To view the presentation materials or the full coverage of these meetings, visit the
Good evening and welcome back to the October 30th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The Board was meeting in non-public for the last hour, but we are now back for the general meeting. I'd like to say good evening to my colleagues on the Board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and certainly those that are at home watching us from the comfort of their homes on this cold rainy night. I'd like to start by introducing the Board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And good evening, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger.
Good evening, everyone.
To Nancy's left, we have our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. We also have our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, in attendance, off mic. My name is Nico Papakostandis. First item on the agenda this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to step up and speak to the Board on a subject that they like. I will pause for a moment, and we do not have any attendees on Zoom, so we'll move on. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, so I would ask for the Board to look at the minutes of the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting of October 16, 2023, and at first ask if there are any amendments or revisions to the minutes.
I just have one, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Page 6, D4, the last, second to last sentence, it says, "They heard two applications, 1, 8." It's Commerce Way, not Congress Way.
Okay. Do you see that, Joanna? It's page 6, D, number 4. Instead of 8, Congress Way, it should be Commerce Way?
Thank you.
And were there any others, Selectwoman Belanger?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just point out that that is the first?
It is.
Amendment of the minutes since I joined this Board. We have the most amazing minutes taker, Joanna.
It was probably my fault, because I was probably so tired at the end of the evening that I was mumbling. So I will take full responsibility.
It is a delight to work with Joanna.
Any other revisions or amendments? Then, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of October 16, 2023, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We do not have any appointments or resignations this evening, so we can jump right into our discussion items. The first of which is the second reading for the request for a 15-minute parking limit, which would be an amendment to the Ordinance 103.7 of the Town Ordinance Parking Regulation. I would entertain a motion to open the public reading, the second public reading at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public reading is open. Again, this is to amend the Town Ordinance Parking Regulation, which is 103.7, 15-minute parking limit. Currently, it reads, "Front Street, South Side, four spaces east of the post office entrance, Monday through Saturday." Mr. Dean, is there anybody here to speak from staff and/or the applicant?
So a couple of notes on this. One was, from the last reading, the question was raised whether or not it would be one space or two, and the answer is it's one space. The other question that came our way was whether Chief Pullen had any opinion on this, and I know he's in attendance tonight, and maybe he wants to weigh in on it while he's here, but he and I had a conversation over email today, and he basically said that the police department would do their best to enforce it, but that that was, that would be an issue, and they would do their best.
Okay. And it's just one space. Do we have the address?
It is.
In front of 152.
Right, 152.
Okay.
Right.
All right. And the, nobody from the applicant is not here?
Not here.
Okay. All right. Any other further questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Dean, we have to have a third public reading at our next meeting?
Third reading, and then if all goes well, you would set the activation date of the new ordinance.
Great. Okay. And if there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to close the second public reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Chief Pullen, I think you're up for the replacement of the public safety communication control. Good evening.
Good evening. While we were looking at our public safety complex for last year's warrant and looking at dispatch and what we would need for equipment to bring over to the new area, if we were to get one, we found out that one of our major radio components is out of date to be fixed or warranted. It's a 10-year-old piece of equipment. It's basically a computer tower that acts as a communications hub for police and fire in this case. It's called a radio console. It's made by Motorola, and it would outfit for two seats and dispatch, which is what we have now. And since the upgrades have not been able to happen, we find that this is a dire emergency piece of equipment. It's failed on us several times already. And to give you an idea of what happens when this fails, dispatch, fire, and police are working off these handheld portable radios. So very severe if we lose it again. They don't make the parts for it. There is one person in this whole area that can service it, and he's only basically committed to that piece. So again, out of warranty, parts aren't being made, and we feel that it's important. It's, the current price now, on top of what it was on the CIP, the vendors added 7% to be saved, $300,670. Another reason why it's an emergency is because we're told just to get this built and the parts in six to eight months, and then maybe another two months after that to get it into their radio lab, synced up with our frequencies, and then installed. So we might be up to a year before we get this, even when we order it now. But it's important that we try to order as quick as we can. And I don't know if Chief Wilkin wants to add a little bit more to that.
Got it.
In fairness, I think, I read the memo. The memo says, I know Cory and Russ did some back story to find how do we fund the balance of the 150 that's kind of come up in discussion that we have from the Riverwoods project years ago that they promised the town either towards the fire station or public safety. And it makes sense, and I have to read the memo, that if the EMS revolving fund is strong enough, it is a source of funding that we can move on quickly, we can get the project started in November and just move it along. If we wait until March and hopefully get a public, a positive vote from the voters, we're already five months behind where we are, so it kind of makes sense to move.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Chief.
I also want to add, very important piece, is that we can take this with us if we do get a new building approved. This piece can come with us.
Perfect. Great. Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Stevens, do you have a balance of the revolving fund? Available?
Which balance?
For the EMS revolving fund?
So I have balances that I project, where it will be at the end of the year.
Yes.
I took a look at where we were at 9:30, did some projecting conservatively towards the end of the year based on the rates that we implemented in April. We could be around $335,000 fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, I think it's a good use of the $150,000 fund from Riverwoods and where that came from, and that was, so I'm happy for this way of funding. Thank you.
Sounds like it's definitely needed now. Any other comments or questions? No? If not, then I would entertain a motion to authorize the purchase, a replacement public safety communications console in the amount of $301,000, utilizing the $150,000 previously contributed by Riverwoods for a public safety project, and $151,000 from the EMS revolving fund.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, you know, just for clarification, Cory, the $335,000, where you felt that EMS fund is going to be by the end of the year, estimated, that doesn't include the $151,000, correct?
That's right. That's just, that's our starting point.
Just wanted to make sure.
Where we start to take down from there.
Thank you for the clarification. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Wilkin.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Stevens. Okay. Next, we have a donation to consider from the Daughters of American Revolution. This is a sign that is being offered to be donated for the Winter Street Cemetery, and I think we have Renee Allen here on behalf of the DAR to speak to this. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Greg Bisson sent me. "In 2026, America will celebrate the 200th anniversary of the American Revolution. And as we know, Exeter was the capital of New Hampshire in 1776. So now is the time to begin making plans in Exeter for this nationwide celebration. The American Independence Museum is convening a 250th Planning Committee, and I am sure that Barbara Rim Kounas of the Exeter Historical Society is getting her witty pen ready to enlighten us all in the newspaper. I believe that soon you will be having a parade of organizations appearing before you with their 250th plans and requests. And I am here tonight to introduce you to an organization making plans for the 250th, the Daughters of the American Revolution. The DAR is a nonpartisan civic group of women who work on the DAR's national threefold mission of historic preservation, patriotism, and education. There are 25 chapters in New Hampshire overseen by a state board of officers. I am a member of the Exeter chapter, and we recently celebrated our 125th anniversary last year. You can see more about us on our website. Now, Exeter has been identified by the DAR State Regent Kathleen Sternenberg for a statewide project to honor all Black Revolutionary War soldiers in, from New Hampshire. To do this, the DAR State Board would like to install a DAR 250 signage at the Winter Street Cemetery. This is our small historic cemetery which houses Revolutionary War-era graves, including Private Jude Hall. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce you to a DAR State Officer, Julie Black. Ms. Black is the New Hampshire State Recording Secretary. She comes here tonight to ask permission to work with you to find an appropriate location at the historic cemetery for a heritage sign. Julie?
Hi. Thanks, Renee. I'm going to be really brief. Renee spoke a lot about it. So part of this project that we want to do to celebrate America's 250th birthday is to put two plaques in Exeter. One, we want to put an "America 250" plaque. It has set wording. It's to celebrate the founding of our nation, and that, we're planning on putting at the American Independence Museum. The other one is going to be custom wording that we're working on now. We're going to be working with the Black Heritage Trail New Hampshire organization. We want to put at the Winter Street Cemetery. The reason we chose that, it's one of the few cemeteries in New Hampshire that has multiple Black Revolutionary War soldiers buried there that's documented, that we can actually document. The one thing about DAR, if we're going to put a plaque anywhere and we have historical information on it, it has to be proven out. Our Blacks, New Hampshire Black soldiers, they're truly our forgotten soldiers, and we want to honor their sacrifices, whether they were free or enslaved, by putting this plaque there. As far as the location, where that plaque would go, we'd obviously work with Exeter to make sure that we put it in a proper place. We would like to have it. Our big request is to have it in a prominent location, so maybe even before you get into the gate of the cemetery, but obviously it'd be something that you would approve. If Exeter does approve allowing us to put this plaque at the Winter Street Cemetery, all I need is, I need a formal letter from the Town of Exeter stating that they do approve this plaque. I don't know if you have any questions?
From whom would you need the letter? The Select Board, the Town Manager? You prefer the Select Board?
Either one. Select Board would probably work. I just need to, when I go to National DAR, I have to send that approval letter with my request for the plaque.
Sure. Okay.
Two questions. One is, do you want an opinion or recommendation from the Heritage Commission? And then two, that was for them. Two for you. Is this going to be part of the Black History Trail? And if so, do they have a standard sign?
It's not, it will be a DAR sign with a DAR insignia, so it has to be approved by DAR, but the plan is, I have spoken to a couple people at the Black Heritage Trail about what we want to do, and they're on board. What I'm hoping they will help us with is the wording on the plaque, because I feel, I'm not sure if I'm the right person to come up with that wording. I think they are a better person to do that. We still would have to get it approved by DAR National, which... which I don't see a problem with. They know we're going to be working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And what kind of timeline do you need for our approval?
I'm hoping to send the grant application. So the other part of this is, we want this with 100% participation from our 25 chapters, and we're going to be paying for this through grants, through National. And I'm hoping to have the grants sent to National in January. And I would need to have the approval letter in January, if that's possible. And then I would definitely need to have that approval letter when I go to order the plaques. And we're hoping to do the celebration, the dedication in the fall of 2024.
Okay. Yeah, the only reason I asked is in the event that the Board wanted the Heritage Committee to weigh in on this. I mean, I applaud this wholeheartedly, but.
Well, the only reason I, of the opinion that yes is because it is part of our heritage, and we did do the Elche Grant to restore, rehabilitate most of it. And I don't want to get into signage pollution, for one thing, which is, no, this is not a sign that I wouldn't want to have. You know, it's definitely something I would want to have, just for input on where to put it.
No, I agree. That's why I asked Julia about the timeline.
Because, and have you looked at the cemetery and decided like which street you don't want to have it on? Because?
Not yet, because I, like I said, I think it's something, it would be good to have, I think Renee, you said the Parks and Recreation, whatever department it is that we would work with to walk through the cemetery and figure out what the best place. We don't want to disturb any graves or any possible bones. That's why I was thinking maybe as you, in the front, as you walk in. But still to be decided.
Well, I was wondering if it was going to be outside the cemetery, actually, so people would see it more.
That's what we would prefer.
Yeah.
In a prominent position.
Yeah, Front Street is probably the best place.
Oh, I think it would be nice, because we have that huge weapon thing. I walk by it every day, and I'm like, the cannon. I mean, because there is that beautiful green space right there as sort of the formal entrance to the.
But isn't that part of the potential change to traffic design?
Well, I mean, there's that too.
Yeah. I think being near the, near one of the entrances to the.
I know, but it's just like, that's the nicer side. Instead of the, you know, the big shoulder sidewalk.
It's got the town pound on for that there, too.
Well, but that whole green area that you're, I've noticed a lot lately. Just, I mean, they've probably been doing it for a long time. There's a lot of cars that have been parking there.
Yeah, the church.
Is that, but it's during the week, too.
Kids are playing.
Yeah, kids are playing.
Okay. So I don't know. I just, I just happened to notice it over the last few weeks, so.
Well, and I, I mean, I guess this is why we should talk to the Heritage Committee, because we have all these opinions. And I, and I also think it's an exciting thing to be part of and to participate in. And it would be good to have other town committees.
I have to say, I've done a lot of projects for the state and for our chapter. This is the one I'm probably the most excited in.
That is real.
I think it's, it's, we need to do this to honor our Black, all, and the plaque, the wording on it, we're still working on, will be honoring all New Hampshire Black soldiers, not just the Black soldiers from Exeter. But we felt this was probably the most fitting with the American Independence Museum just down the road, and then the Winter Street Cemetery. So there'll be a dedication ceremony the same day for both, when we get them both installed.
Select and Chartred.
And what would the materials for the sign consist of?
It'll be a bronze plaque, and they're actually quite beautiful. I should have brought a picture. I did one a few years ago for our organizing regent. We also celebrated our 125th, our chapter, several years ago. And we put a DAR plaque on our organizing regent's grave at the Pine Hill Cemetery in Dover. And it's, it's a beautiful bronze, kind of a brown bronze plaque with gold around it. And then the wording on it is raised, and that's also painted in gold. It's quite beautiful.
That's awesome. So maintenance would be minimal with that type of plaque?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. I'm very much for this.
And well, and is it surface mounted or on a, on post?
Yet to be decided. That would be a discussion between us and the Town of Exeter. As far as what they prefer, we can do on the surface. I think it would probably be better mounted on a post. I think it'll stand out more. That would be my preference.
The wall is very hard to attach to.
Yeah.
It's not like smooth or anything.
Yeah.
So can you, so that we can keep track of their timeline, can you have this on the agenda for the next Heritage Committee? And then bring it back to us?
Third Wednesday in November.
So it's the 16th?
I don't have my calendar open.
It's the 16th.
Okay.
Third Wednesday, 15th.
I'm sorry. I thought she said Thursday.
No, I probably did, but it's the third Wednesday, which is the 15th.
Okay.
15th of November.
So we meet again, the Select Board meets again on the, on November 20th. And so if Selectwoman Gilman can bring back any recommendations or suggestions or endorsement, I've already crafted a draft motion because I think we're all, you know, we're all in favor of this, and we can take that back up on November 20th, get the letter to you in plenty of time for you to.
Perfect. And you can actually hand it to Renee, and I can get it from Renee.
Would love to do that. So why don't we plan on that for a timeline? Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And you'll keep us posted on that? Okay.
And if I could just thank Renee for all the great work she's done on Exeter's history and the Black Revolutionary soldiers from Exeter. Thanks for all that work, Renee.
Thank you. So Mr. Dean, if you could jot that down for you and I to remember, November 20th? November 20th. Got it. Great. Thank you again. Okay. Next, the moment we've been waiting for, we have a presentation to the Board on the Facility Condition Assessment. And with us this evening, we have our Maintenance Superintendent Jeff Beck in person. And we also have, from Bureau Veritas, we have Mary Venable on Zoom, who I believe is going to give the presentation.
Yes.
Mary, can you still hear us?
I certainly can.
Terrific. And I can see you. How are you?
Yeah, I'm good. How are you?
I'm well. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm excited for the high-level presentation of the FCA.
All right. Well, thank you for having me.
Okay.
Let me share my screen. I have a few little slides to show.
Okay.
That will help clarify things.
Beautiful.
All right. Let me get to share screen first.
Okay.
Turn on my slideshow. All righty. Well, thank you again for having me. My name is Mary Venable. I am from Bureau Veritas. Let me tell you a little bit first about, about who we are and then what the study that we did for you. So as I said, Bureau Veritas North Americas is what BVNA stands for. And I'll go through these items about the project that we did for you, how we did it, and what our findings were. Bureau Veritas is an international company. We have persons all over the United States. And what we do is, we do all kinds of building assessments. As you can see from the graphic here, we specialize on capital planning, as we've done for you. But we do other things throughout all phases of the life of property. Most importantly, capital planning. The scope of the job we had for you was to look at the facilities and their condition, look at the condition of all of the capital assets that eventually need replacement at some point in the next 20 years. So, you know, all buildings have a structure that usually doesn't get replaced. But there are things like HVAC, that is, heating and air conditioning, interior finishes, windows, and those things all generally need replacement at some point or another. And a lot of times, that's within 20 years. A lot of those things have a 20-year life. So we identified those things and put dollar values on them for you. And we also looked at things that could save you a little money on energy costs. Our approach is that, first of all, we talked to, talked to your staff, looked at documents, talked to Mr. Beck and Mr. Blazic. Then we sent our people out, and they did thorough assessments of the buildings. We look at every piece of the building. We try to identify what's in good condition, what's in poor condition, and the expected future life of those items. We prepared detailed reports. We prepared actually 10 reports on 13 buildings. We lumped together the buildings for the Public Works Facilities, put them in one report. And we delivered these reports to you. I think we've already talked to one group, and the reports are pretty detailed. We also delivered our, what we call Asset Calc Database, that has all the data in it that we gathered. And that database is available for your use. It is your data, and it's there for, in perpetuity for you to use. It can be updated and, and massaged many ways. As I mentioned, we, these are the items we look at when we do a physical building assessment. We look at things on the site, like the parking lot, fencing. Look at all the exterior finishes of a building, the roofs, very important. Interior finishes, and then very important, a large dollar value thing is the mechanical systems. When we go out on site, this little slide shows you how we do this. We have a little app, which is a proprietary app on an iPad, and it's linked to our database. And as our assessors go around, they take note of every item that they look at. And they put in a cost, put in a condition, expected remaining life, and that links directly to our database. Our database has thousands of items in it, and it's based on RS Means generally, and Whitestone. And from that, we get the expected useful life of all these items and the typical cost. For each item we look at, as I was mentioning, we looked at the condition. And this gives you just an idea of how we rate condition. It could be anywhere from excellent, brand new, down to failed, something that needs replacement right away. If you go through our reports, you'll see that a lot, a lot of things are in the fair condition. Most things are fair, because most things aren't failed, most things aren't brand new. So that covers a lot of area. So for each item, we, for each building, I should say, we prepare Facility Condition Index. And what this is, is simply the costs to replace the capital items at any one point, prepared, compared to the cost of replacing the whole building. And what this does, at least gives you a numeric value for looking at the building and seeing what condition it's in. Instead of just saying, you know, good, fair, or poor condition of the building, it gives you an actual numeric value that you can compare among buildings. So this slide shows you, for instance, this is a example of one of the graphs of Facility Condition Assessment. This is the Town Hall. And the, it has two axes. So the first axis, as you see across the bottom, those are the costs that we anticipate you will incur in those years. This goes over the first 10 years from the date of our assessment. And you see that we don't see a lot of costs being incurred until 2027. When a building doesn't have that many costs incurred or anticipated compared to replacement of the whole building, we say that building is in good condition. The other, the red line that you see is the actual Facility Condition Index line. So you see this one in year 10, 2023, going up to about 11. So that's a, an index of 11 means even if you did nothing to the building, it would still be in fair condition. Okay? The gray bars that you see assume that nothing gets spent on the building. And so those are cumulative each year. Looking for my page down. Okay. So here's what we found on your buildings that we looked at. We find that, I have to move this thing off of my screen here. All right. We find that in, in year 10, so that's 2023, or 2033, if you spend nothing on your buildings, they will end up being in what's considered fair condition in the most part. See a couple of things in pink, and you see the Public Works Campus and the recreational bathhouse end up in categories that say, they're getting kind of long in the tooth. Something needs to be done with those. And I'll show you in a minute what's going on at the Public Works Campus. What this shows you is that costs are fairly moderate within the next three years. But, so as long as maintenance and replacement is kept up, you're in good shape. But you see what happens in 10 years if replacements aren't made. And this is a graph out of our software. There's a lot of data in our database that goes into more detail for each building. This is just another graph showing costs along the bottom, just a different way of looking at the data. Oh, shoot. Didn't want to go to that. Just relative costs in different chunks of years, as you can see. There's not a whole lot that's in the current year, but we'll shoot it out to 10 years. You see that there, there could be quite a bit of expense. Now, this slide is from Mr. Blazic. What we came up with as the average needs for expenditures over 10 years is $750,000. And below, you see your current budget. So this is just a demonstration of what money you might need. What we do is, we look at each item just at face value. We look at when we expect it should need to be replaced. There is leeway in that, and there are decisions to be made as to where to spend money. But this is just an objective look of where those things land.
Excuse me.
I have, I have a few, just a quick overview of some of the major items we saw. So some of the buildings had, had some things on the exteriors, exterior finishes that needed to be done. One of them, down below, I think that roof shown on the third one has already been done because we were out there quite a while ago now. Okay. Some of the sites had things on the site itself that needed to be done. And one major one was the fueling station out at the Public Works Campus. And this cost may have increased since we prepared this report. But that's a big dollar item. These two items are the garages at the Public Works Campus. And what they are is that, since the buildings were built, they're steel prefab or pre-engineered buildings. They no longer meet snow load requirements for their structure. And so you either have the choice of sending someone up there shoveling snow on a metal roof, or they should be strengthened. And these are the costs that we've estimated to strengthen these buildings so that they meet current snow load requirements. When you look at different needs across the, you know, three, five, and 10-year and 20-year time periods, you'll see that certain categories tend to be major categories. So this one showing the first five years, you'll see that interior finishes is one item that is kind of a big chunk of money. What you'll typically see also is mechanical, electrical things are typically a major chunk. In this case, they increase. This is our general information, just a summary. You've seen this slide a minute ago. This is our general information, just a summary. You've seen this slide a minute ago. Those are the anticipated costs that you'll, you should incur over the next ten years. And these are all in the reports. As I said, there's a lot of data. This is another way of looking at those donut charts that we saw a minute ago. This in the database is actually clickable and you can click on each one of those costs and see what's included in that cost. But that gives you an overview of the different trades, when you should anticipate having to spend money to replace items. Conclusion is that your facilities are in fair condition, good to fair condition. You will need to spend money on them to keep them in that condition. And the high dollar things we saw were the fueling station and the structural upgrades at the Public Works Buildings, those two garages. And that, that is our presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. There's a lot here. I'm sure we all have questions or comments, but I wanted to ask you if we could go, if you could go back to your slide, Facility Condition Assessment, page two. I think you just passed it.
Sorry.
It's blue. No, the next one?
Yes, this one?
Nope, the next one.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Yep. Okay. So if currently there's a maintenance budget that's $163,000, you're suggesting that in order to maintain the facilities that we need to be looking at somewhere between that and 750 per year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Start down here. Any, any questions or comments for Mary?
I'm sorry, you're looking at me?
I'm looking just in this direction.
Yeah. I mean, that, I'm not surprised at the amount that we have to invest in our buildings. They're old. If we want to keep them, then we have to maintain them. I guess the other thing I'm thinking about is, you know, if we, if we do a big project, say we do get past something with DPW and do something with that building, you know, that would kind of knock some of this part of it off. It would, it would shift it somewhere else, obviously, but yeah.
Well, to that end, I'm excited that, you know, I know the Facilities Committee, you know, vigorously argued to, to get this study done. And I know they, they wholeheartedly endorsed it on the warrant article. And I know that in the past, they've been lukewarm to anything towards public works. Because I know we've tried to get at least something going with this. So I'm, my desire is that now that we have it in, in writing from an expert, that we can start moving on.
Yeah, that would be my hope too.
Didn't take an assessment if you've been out there.
Yes.
Been in dire need for, since the first year I served on the BRC and was on the DPW Subcommittee a long time ago.
It's been a while, long time.
And kudos to all of you for keeping it, keeping it together. So I mean, it's, it's a priority. Selectman Chartran?
I'd just like to hear if Jeff has any comments.
Come on up.
I think that Mary in Bureau Veritas has done an excellent job on this whole thing. And it's, it's a big, it's a big bite to take all at once. I think some of the discussion has been incrementally increasing that it's not just the maintenance projects fund, but that is individual building maintenance funds for those thirteen specific buildings totals out to around that 63K a year. And if you add, that includes everything from custodial costs to regular maintenance, housekeeping, upkeep of the buildings.
Right.
So we just included the two together because that's the total amount that we have to maintain all of these buildings annually. Basically, that maintenance projects fund we use for those major projects that, you know, maybe 22, that total amount of $100,000. And if we encumber funds because we know we have a lot of work coming up in the next year, then it's usually earmarked for a specific job. So.
And emergencies happen too. You know, projects come up that you're not anticipating that you've got to put everything now to the side.
The Department of Labor.
Correct.
Coming in and doing an audit, yes. Those emergencies do occur. And they get expensive real fast. So.
And they take priority.
Yep, they do. And it's the safety items and the health and safety of the buildings is just the key factor for us.
Right.
All around. And that starts right at the ground, right at the foundation of the building. It's the foundation and the roof really, and then everything inside.
Everything in between. Right.
Yep. It's the same way you take care of your home.
Sure.
So, thank you, Mary, for that. You've done an excellent job again.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions or comments? You've got to have one.
Me? No. I've already seen this. I think I've asked questions before. Mr. Selectman Chartran may have questions since he's on the Facilities Committee.
So we've got a big push this year. We're a new public safety facility. And we're kind of holding off on a lot of other initiatives to put on the warrant. But I would urge us to get to it a year from now, or slightly less than a year from now, and really try to up our, the amount of money we dedicate, as this report points out. So we can't act on it immediately because we've got some priorities going on to the warrant. But, you know, next summer and fall, I would really think it would be appropriate to factor that into the budget process and what goes on the warrant.
I agree. I think twofold. I think we need to look at specific projects for warrant articles. And I think maybe we need to rethink the money that we're putting in the budget for some of these maintenance projects that can be.
I, I was thinking that we need to establish what that $750,600 per year looks like and get back to the board and probably have some more in-depth discussions with the Facilities Committee as well as.
I absolutely agree. And I think somewhere you got to find a spot between 163, or realistically 100.
Yeah.
Because that 63 is baked in. That doesn't really include what we're trying to achieve. So you've got between 175, we've got to find, with the help of the Facilities Committee, with the help of Mr. Beck and his staff.
That, in that 750, or, you know, that's an ideal world. If we could do everything that we wanted all the time and we had full staff continuously throughout that 10 years, then that's the money we would spend just doing regular maintenance and upkeep across the board.
Understood.
So if you're looking at it that way, that's in a perfect world. And we do not live in a.
Well, in a perfect world, you just brought up another good point. A perfect world, DPW is completely staffed, which will, we will get that done.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about a roof that needs to be shuffled.
It's not just us. It's everywhere. You know, I see it every day in just dealing with our contractors.
These problems are not exclusive to Exeter or New Hampshire. So, right.
It's the new world.
Selectman Chartran?
Just one more point. Mary, thank you for your presentation. When you presented this to the Facilities Committee, you emphasized that this database would be available to us to update as we do make progress on our facilities, on these buildings?
Yes, that's correct. There's a module where you can show work that has been done and you can update items. Say, for instance, if you have a heating unit, a furnace, and you replace it, you can update that item right there in the database to show that you now have a new unit. You can put in the make, model, and serial number, and that becomes part of your data.
Thank you. Thanks for the great work that you've done, that you and your company have done.
Well, thank you very much.
No need to belabor, but I'm really glad we're talking about it because I think, you know, this is the, the stuff that is not fun to fund or work on, but it also becomes the stuff that is in crisis and becomes a huge headache if we're not on top of it. So just adding, adding my.
Yeah. It's more expensive if you keep picking that can down the road, so to speak.
That's right. And it also, in my view, is so important to prioritize a DPW infrastructure because people work there. And it's, you know, it's, it's not only expensive to fix, but it's also like, right.
Well, that's, that's across the board. I mean, you know, I know there's a lot of good intentioned ideas for things that we can be doing at certain buildings, Town Hall, for instance, the rec building. I mean, there's, you know, there's opportunity there to do some fun and creative things. But, you know, as Jeff alluded to, Department of Labor come in with some surprises. And with those surprises, we have to ensure, number one, the safety and health of all of our employees in all of the buildings. I mean, we, we can see public works. That's, to the naked eye, very apparent. But I know that the Department of Labor, you know, found some other things. And the health and safety of our employees come first.
The, one other thing I'd like to say is the Facilities Committee has gone through this and then at our last meeting talked about what's on the capital improvement plan and what's recommended. And one of the reasons that the Facilities Committee was hesitant to put or put a priority on some of the public works projects is because of that land that we acquired a couple of years ago and that really a master plan or better flowing plan, you know, really think about it as opposed to having, you know, garage here and office building over there. So having this kind of priority list for that.
We have been working on that. We will have something for you before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you.
On that piece of property. And we've had a few meetings with Weston and Sampson about that already. And there, they have some, the study is pretty much formulated. So we should be seeing a draft soon and then have something to present to you right after that.
Wonderful.
That's great.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So that's just the, you know, the Budget Committee has been working on prioritizing what's been on the list of public work projects, in general, building projects in general, and agrees with what the decisions have been made because of some work that needs to be done ahead of time.
Right. Great. Anything else? Well, fantastic. Mary, thank you again to you and your company for the work that you've done here for the presentation this evening. And we look forward to working with you ongoing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Thanks, Mary.
And Jeff, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm told that the microphones and the cameras are down. And Bob has set up a camcorder for us and is recording off of that camcorder. Okay. Just so you know. Thank you.
It happened on the camera. It said recording. Often, I've heard anything like that. Yes, cheese to the rescue so we could see.
Disabled, but you asked, what could go wrong? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Dean, for the update. And I appreciate Bob's very quick web to set that up. Fantastic. Of course, I know the camera's pointed right this way, but that's okay. Mr. Dean, I think you and Mr. Stevens want to take up the next discussion.
Yes, the fund balance discussion. So it's, it's tax rate setting time again. The Board annually reviews where we are with that process and makes a determination regarding the amount of fund balance we need to apply to lower the tax rate. And this year, I would alert you to the first page in the packet. Basically, the DRA recommended fund balance preservation amounts are between 5% and 17% of budget. And that's based upon, the budget is driven by the town, both the town, the schools, also the statewide education tax and then the county tax. So that number adds up to, on the appropriation side, $72,398,411. And if you look at the, the undesigned fund balance recommended there, it amounts to $3.619 million. Now, I would go crosswalk from there down to the tax rate setting fund balance. And I want to thank the Finance Director for working diligently to get this fund balance number. We, we have had some challenges with that this year in terms of getting our audit finalized, but we're on the track of getting it finalized. And we feel comfortable with this number that's come out from the auditors on the tax rate setting fund balance. So that number is 4.858356 million dollars. And in 2023, on the town warrant, we voted from fund balance 511,771 dollars in warrant articles. So that gives you an available number of 4.34 million. So we are recommending in 2023 that we use $300,000 to lower the tax rate. And that would bring our new balance at the end of 12/31/23 to $4,46,585. And where that puts us in the percentages is, puts us at 5.59%. So we would be just over that 5% threshold that the DRA recommends that we stick to. So that is what we are recommending. And there are a couple of scenarios in the packet for you to look at. We ran it to, one was with 300,000, one was with 500,000. And you can see the delta there. It's approximately four cents per thousand, depending on for each hundred thousand that you would use in fund balance to lower the rate. So we are recommending, if, if all goes according to plan and the Board adopts this recommendation, we would be looking at a tax rate on the town side of $6.28 per thousand for 2023. And I should mention too, that we're headed into a revalue here. So things are going to look quite a bit different in 2024.
Mention that once you're close. Any questions or comments from Mr. Dean or Mr. Stevens?
We don't have any.
Down this side? No? So you need a motion this evening, Mr. Dean, to adopt the recommendation of the 300,000 from the fund balance?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the recommendation of utilizing $300,000 from the fund balance to lower the tax rate to 5.59%. Is that correct?
To five, five point, to maintain a fund balance of 5.59%.
5.9%. There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
We do this every year, correct, Mr. Chair?
Correct. Well, we have since I've been on the board.
Every year, yes.
Yeah.
Good question. Any other comments, discussion? It's a motion and a second. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. Mr. Dean, if this computer means anything, the video seems to be back on for the camera.
Okay.
So that's good news. Moving into regular business, there are no tax abatements or credits or exemptions this evening, nor are there any permits or approvals. So we would jump right into your report, Mr. Dean, if you would.
Sure. I want to give thanks to the Public Works Department for their work on striping Epping Road. They did a great job. And if you've noticed and been able to drive Epping Road, they put a lot of effort into that. And it was good, good news to report. So I wanted to report that back to the Board and thank the Department for all their efforts. Also, we completed a Seabrook drill on October 18th. I know Chief Wilking is here as our Emergency Management Director. The drill was successful. There were, as usual, there were quite a few components to the drill. We do this consistently and we are looking at a graded exercise in 2024. We will continue to train. And I know the Board received alerts during the drill as well. And you will continue to get those when we have a drill. Obviously, if it was a real life situation, we would have the Board at the Emergency Operations Center. So that was a.
we would have the board at the Emergency Operations Center. So, uh, that was a successful event. Uh, I attended the ninety-one A training at the library on October eighteenth. That was also a successful event. Uh, thanks to Steve Buckley from NHMA for attending and educating everybody about ninety-one A, that important statute that we need to follow. Also, we had our leadership group meeting on October nineteenth. Uh, that is the small group of department heads that meets biweekly and discusses, amongst other things, uh, issues that are going on in their departments and also, uh, goes through leadership, uh, activities as well. And we had the BRC all-day meeting on October twentieth, which I was able to attend that. Uh, we did have a department meeting, department head meeting on October twenty-fifth with all the departments. Uh, and then I attended an REDC meeting at C3I on October twenty-fifth. That went very well. We got a tour of the facility. Um, and were able to connect with other economic development personnel in different communities and talk about labor force and workforce issues and so forth. Um, also, I attended the Senator Shaheen's visit on Friday and again, wanted to recognize Kristin Murphy and her efforts in securing the two hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, a great win for the town. And Kristin did a great job getting that. And I think it's going to be a successful program. And it was, uh, it was a nice, a nice event on Friday. Um, finally, I have, just, just to remind everybody, the deliberative session will be February third, two thousand twenty-four, and the snow date will be Tuesday, February sixth at six P M. And that was what I had for tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, moving along, um, Select Board Committee reports. We'll start with Selectwoman Belanger, please.
Okay. Um, October seventeenth, Mr. Dean and I attended our biweekly pedestrian parking traffic study meeting. Um, we have another one tomorrow. Um, October eighteenth, ninety-one A Right to Know Training. Thank you very much. That, I think, went well. Um, October nineteenth, again with Mr. Dean and a few other people, we had a tour of the forty-four units of a tiny home, home project in Dover. Um, with John and Maggie Randolph of Exeter are doing this project. Um, there were forty-four units of approximately four hundred square feet each. Um, those forty-four units took the place of what would have, could have been nine single-family homes. Um, Mr. Um, Wyndham is going to give us some numbers on Friday at our Housing Advisory Committee meeting, but it was an interesting project and I'm looking forward to seeing it done with all the landscaping and things. Um, and that was also organized by the Workforce Housing Coalition of the Greater Sea Coast Director Nick Taylor. Um, attended the all-day budget meeting on October twentieth for General Government. And then October twenty-fifth was the BRC Police and Fire Budgets. Um, October twenty-sixth, Planning Board. We came in, but both applicants, there was something, so we ended up having to table those, both applicants, to the sixteenth of November. So that was a pretty quick meeting. Um, I'm, my apologies to Kristin Murphy, who I wish I could have attended. And I know, Mr. Chair, you attended that. October twenty-seventh, um, recognition with Senator Sheen. Um, I did get to send her an email, but I really wished I could have been there. That, that was a big deal. Um, again, Mr. Dean and I have October thirty-first tomorrow with, uh, pedestrian parking traffic study. And then we have another budget meeting Wednesday night for DPW. And the Housing Advisory Committee meeting will meet this Friday. And that's it for me.
Terrific. Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman, who was also in attendance Friday with Senator Sheen.
Yes. And I, I would like to, um, just point out from that meeting, it was, uh, there were folks from Unitil, EverSource, the Department of Energy, um, the Federal Department of Energy, lots of folks that, um, were, are affected or interested in this grant. And I just wanted to point out that when, um, Renee Allen was describing it, uh, the, the Energy Committee's participation in the grant is that, um, what they're looking for, and these grants are for, uh, energizing, energy efficiency, um, installations or, um, moderations to, uh, resident-owned mobile home parks, so cooperative mobile home parks. So what we're going to need to do is have somebody manage that. And what we're hoping is to, once we have the funds and, or even before we have the funds, to set up the, um, the flow chart of how it's going to work. And, and Renee brought up the idea of having a champion for each mobile home park that would do all the work of, um, because it would be a grant, a sub-grantee kind of thing from us to the homeowner that wants to do some energy efficiency work on their place. Uh, and it was, uh, there were people there that I felt like I should have known, had never met. So that, that was very nice. You want me to go with the rest of my?
Please, yes.
Heritage Commission met and are discussing our upcoming, uh, we were, we've been talking about, you know, projects to do in the future. Uh, one of the things that we came up with was, um, doing some, uh, using our fabulous television system to do, uh, short movies or, uh, presentations anyway of the work that we've done that just sit on the website and nobody knows they're there. So it would be like, we did the, uh, historic survey of the Franklin Street area. So it would be, uh, a voiceover of photographs of the, uh, before, you know, as far back as we can go before any changes happen and what's there now. Um, and, and things like that, the, you know, the history, people think that history is all about the buildings, that, or that's all we're looking at. But the history of that area is really very compelling and was part of what would make it actually, not available, but could be listed on the National Register of Historic Places because it, because of, uh, the manufacturing that occurred there, carriage wheels and carriage painting and carriages in general, shoeboxes, but also the migration, the, the pattern of migration and that, um, when one, um, ethnicity was traveling or moving to New Hampshire, and I'm going to start with the Polish folks because I think they're the ones I knew first, but there are folks that came before them. That's where they settled first. And then as they've gotten more prosperous, they'd move out to the, and the town grew, they'd move out. And then would come in the next group, Italians or something like that. So it showed, you know, how, it showed a New Hampshire sample of how the federal, um, uh, pattern growth was working. So those are the kind of things that we've, people need to know.
See, I think that's exciting. And I'm glad we can utilize our, our TV for that.
Yeah. Um, let's see, the HDC was canceled, canceled and the Facilities Committee meeting, either Mr. Shertrand might want to talk about a little bit more, but we pretty much heard most of it. So that's it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan.
I just had the, um, excuse me, I had the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee where we, um, discussed, uh, changing, um, changing the fees for fields, which has not been done in twenty-plus years.
Wow.
So we are looking at making sure that we have enough money to cover the cost of what it takes to maintain the fields.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Selectwoman Shertrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I too attended the Budget Recommendation Committee all-day meeting on the twentieth. Um, Selectwoman Belanger mentioned that. And I also attended the Facilities Committee on the evening of the twenty-fifth of October. The thing that struck me at that meeting was, uh, we had a, a great and vigorous discussion with our, uh, both Selectwoman Gilman and I were there. And we had a great discussion, uh, the town planner, Dave Sharple's was there as well, um, about the intersection between the Facilities Report we just heard and the, uh, capital improvement projects and sort of the strategy that we're taking this year to prioritize the new public safety building. And it was, um, a great conversation about needs and assessments and, and, um, and strategizing about how to approach the voters with these. Um, I pointed out to our volunteers on the Facilities Committee that, um, their participation is, uh, essential, not just for the knowledge that they bring to the table. Um, all of our members of that committee are extremely, erudite about facilities management. But once we all agree on how we should proceed, these volunteers become a, a huge source of, um, sort of getting the word out about why the things on the warrant should be, uh, voted and approved. Um, and so we had a conversation about that and about how they are, um, critical to the word-of-mouth campaign once the, uh, the warrant is set and, uh, we go to voting. Um, and then I also attended, after that meeting, I got a two-for-one that night. Um, I attended the end of the, um, Fire and Police Budget Recommendation Committee, uh, on the twenty-fifth that evening. Um, and it was great to, uh, hear the Budget Recommendation Committee review that, um, that proposal for a, um, a new public safety, uh, facility out in the west part of town. So it was like, we're getting, we're getting the word out to the voters on the necessity for that project and why it is a priority. And, uh, it was a great evening, that evening of the twenty-fifth, attending those two meetings.
Great. Thank you. So I attended, um, all of the BRC meetings that have been mentioned, uh, the all-day and the police and fire. I attended the ninety-one A training that was several weeks ago. And again, the, um, uh, entertaining, um, Senator Shaheen to come and celebrate, um, the wonderful work that the Energy Committee and Kristin Murphy have done, in particular, that two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, which I believe, Mr. Dean, was only one of ten. Am I correct?
Uh, one of twelve.
One of twelve.
In the country.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. Amazing.
Another public congratulations to not only Kristin Murphy, um, who vigorously, tries to obtain any and every grant that she can, as well as Mr. Sharple's, of course, too. But the Energy Committee, again, can't say enough about the work that they've done, the initiatives that they've identified, and, um, and they get it done.
I think one of the reasons that, um, that I think Ms. Murphy, uh, pointed out, one of the reasons that, um, the grant source was, uh, really attracted to Exeter was because of the number of, of mobile homes and mobile home cooperative units that we have, that we have a chance to reach out and educate and help more people who are underrepresented in, in many of the programs or, or just, you know, never are educated on them. So this is a good opportunity, not just to, to get money from this grant, but also to point out what EverSource has available, what Unitil has available, that they, I have to say quietly have on their website. They do have, uh, you know, button-ups and, and things like that, uh, to help folks, uh, conserve energy.
Well, what's remarkable about our success is, you know, between the Energy Committee, between the Planning Department, Public Works, um, you know, and other departments that, that, you know, identify initiatives, identify grants, particularly those that are, you know, energy efficient, um, when it comes to, you know, conservation or, you know, the solar array in particular, or anything like that. Um, what's remarkable is just, you know, how much the legislative body gets behind these projects as well. And so, I mean, it really, it, it helps, it helps get these things passed where we've got, you know, such, um, a passionate, um, staff that wants to see these initiatives through. And we have a passionate legislative body that wants to see these energy efficient initiatives. And then to have, you know, the Senator who's, who's come before. I mean, we, we saw Senator Shaheen several years ago at the wastewater plant, Congressman Papas. I mean, to have, to have our, um, our, our, our Senators and Congresspeople in Washington, um, knowing that Exeter is behind these initiatives and that the legislative body will support it and put up their end of things. I mean, I think that's, that's how we get these things accomplished.
I also think of the LED streetlight project that kicked this all off in two thousand nineteen that really got us going. And, um, Exeter has become an energy efficiency leader across the state for sure. And, um, it's a tribute to the passionate staff that we do have that
We do.
take, take it and run with it and produce results from it. And it is great to see. And I, I feel grateful that we are going to be serving an underserved population with this grant and partnering with New Hampshire Saves and making a difference in people's lives that are living in these, in the manufactured home parks. And I think it's a great thing. So we, we can't wait to get started with it.
Well, it's exciting, again, to be on the forefront, um, in New Hampshire and to, to help our community and to be recognized, you know, um, statewide and nationally. I mean, that's, that's exciting. So with that, I also attended, for my committees, Swayze Parkway, uh, trustees, uh, talked a little bit about, um, some work that they need to do. Uh, they'll be, uh, going through the RFPs for the maintenance at their next meeting. They completed the, if you haven't been down there, they, they painted no dog signs on the sidewalks to try to deter, uh, dogs. But from what I understand, that isn't working out as well as they thought. But, uh, but still, they did a nice job. They worked hard.
Can do his try.
That's right. That's right. Uh, Arts and Culture Committee met on the same night. We will be seeing them, I believe, uh, at our next meeting. They would like to present a donation of a statue. Um, that, uh, sounds very exciting. And I look forward to their presentation next Monday night. I think that's all the meetings, Mr. Dean.
I think that's it.
If that, okay. Correspondence. Um, we have a letter from the CEO. I've lost. Uh, a letter from the CEO of Pendercheck Waterworks, uh, with the estimated water rate increase. We also have a letter from the Rockingham County Treasurer, um, which includes the Rockingham County warrant. And last but not least, uh, Mr. Dean from, uh, Department of Revenue Municipal and Property Division, a community action report. Did you want to briefly speak to that?
Yeah, this is a document that the DRA once, uh, shared with the, uh, board. And it talks about the revaluation conference that, uh, was held by MRI and our assessing contractors, our assessing contractors with the DRA. And they went through the specifics of the upcoming two thousand twenty-four revaluation, uh, talked about the aspects of the new contract. That was the one that the board approved recently at a, at a meeting. And, uh, they reviewed their monitoring procedures, uh, of the DRA and contractor reporting expectations.
Great. Thank you. Reviewing the board calendar, we meet again next Monday, November sixth, and then November twentieth, December sixth. I'm sorry, December fourth.
Yeah, I was gonna say what?
Just making sure you're listening. And then December eighteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we've already met in non-public. Any other business from the board? Great. Then I will, we will see each other again next Monday. Uh, if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somewhat.
Motion in a second. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Good night. The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels Six and Twenty-Two. Channel Six is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel Twenty-Two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Bluehawk Media, is operated by SAU sixteen and can be found on Channel Eight with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.